Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Tuesday, February 18, 2025, meeting of the Town Runback Planning Board. We are missing one member whom I expect, but we nevertheless have a forum. And so we will begin the meeting with a confirmation of the posted meeting agenda. Since, let me see if I get this right, since our last meeting, we did hear from Christian Moore at CPL on the Ramapo project. We were waiting for some information back. We received that. I believe Christian has answered all the questions and cleared them. Jim, you can give the details. We're going to add that to the end of the agenda. We think we can do the approval this evening, having received all that information. You have Jim's meeting notes. Are there any questions or comments? May I have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Extension, motion carries. You have a draft form for February 3rd minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, additions they'd like to make? If there are none, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Correspondence and announcements. I do not have any. Gretchen, anything? Jim? Nothing? All right, then we can move right into the first new application for this evening. That is that of Christopher Travers, 500 Route 9, site plan review for the construction of two-car garage. Is there anyone here for Mr. Travers? All right, Jim, well, let's go to Ramapo. Let's pick that up now.
Okay, so if everyone remembers, was it the last meeting? We re-ramped our partners. It was a two-lot, post-two-lot subdivision upon Ly Road. We reviewed it. Everyone seemed to be good with it, no real issues. There were just a couple minor issues, technical issues, I guess I'd say, with the SWIP that they needed to complete. Christian took a look at it from CPL, had a bunch of little comments. And then Rodney today said that everything has been fixed. There's just a couple signatures that need to put on the pages, which is not a big deal. So the SWIP is now where he thinks it needs to be. So if you are so inclined, we could go through and do the approval resolution for it, which would include a SEAKER approval, going through the part two, and then the approval resolution itself.
And we're meeting in D.C., also, right?
They got their permit.
Yeah, right after the meeting, they got their permit from D.C., so they're clear there. So what's left is to go through the approvals. To close the public hearing, it's just a matter of...
Are there any issues or questions? Is anyone in favor of going ahead with this? I don't think Jim really...
It's not in my mental, it wasn't on the agenda, so we have our screen.
Okay, let's turn our attention to screen.
All right. So the first thing we do would be the SEAKER approval resolution for Ramapo Valley Partners LLC for minor subdivision. The subdivision consisting of two lots. The Town Runback Planning Board, its role duly established through the agency under SEAKER and upon review of completion and completion of the short EAF and associated... Oh, wait, I'm sorry, the short EAF. Let's take care of that. Get me ahead of myself. So you know, but through this before, the short EAF part two, the impact assessment, asking whether or small impact may occur or large impact may occur. And number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensification of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the CDA? The answer to that is no, because we don't have any in the... Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walking? Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact the existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Hit the 1:00 and we'll be in.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
So that should be known, since the SWIP has been done.
Christian reviewed that. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Okay, so with that, then, you've got to know where small impact may occur. Get back to the SEAKER approval resolution.
But after we do the...
So this is for dividing consisting of two lots. The Town Runback Planning Board, its role duly established through the agency under SEAKER and upon review of completion and short EAF and associated information. Hereby issued a negative declaration under state-of-the-art environmental impact statement. Statement is not required, and stating such would not be prepared in consideration of the minor subdivision for the property at 65 Ly Road through the RC5 zoning district and taking this action. The board approves the minor subdivision before the proposed actions hereby approved for implementation.
I think we would vote on that.
Man, a motion?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor? I am likely to call the board, this is the approval. Craig?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen? Paul? Delise? And over line.
Great, one more. SEAKER approved. We will now talk about the draft approval resolution against Ramapo Valley Partners for minor subdivision 65 Ly Road. Reaffirming the prior qualifications enlisted under SEAKER, which according to environmental quality review is not required. I noted that the short EAF forms have been included and approved based upon the yearly information submitted and putting reports from planning board members on site visit. Finding the proposed work is consistent with the objective stated in Chapter 101 subdivision of land. With respect to minor subdivision finding proposed actions consistent with Time Book Chapter 101 and approving the application inclusive of the minor subdivision lot line alteration sheet prepared by William in town dated December 16th, 2024. Authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the site plans, so big 24 items is there. And they're not here, but again, just remind everyone that the plans that are submitted by the board must match those that are submitted to the town.
May I have a motion?
Second?
Hi.
Karen?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
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 And over line. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So we'll circle that. Christopher Travers.
Needing a warrant.
Okay. A warrant did not make the brief on this one. So then we heard past 6:05, so we will move into the first public hearing. Now we have two. I'm in heaven. So this first hearing for this evening is that of Martin Kemp, 10 Charles Street Site Plan and Special Use Permit, Patio EV Charger and Retaining Wall. Want to step up to the microphone?
The night system microphone. I can project.
Do we have no microphones? It's marvelous.
I can use this one.
Okay, use that one now.
Yeah.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, good.
He hasn't said "testing."
Testing, one, two, three. It's like, okay, you're welcome. Yeah, check, check. Okay, what do you need? Me just to give you a refresher?
Quick refresher.
Sure. So yeah, this is the retroactive approval for patio, small retaining wall, EV charger, and then also putting in, preparing the doors in the front of the house and back of the house, putting some new ones on, which actually will be more just like that than the ones that were. So maybe that's a good thing. That's it. So yeah, sorry, you can ask me questions.
Jim, do you have anything? You?
No, nothing new. We did get some door image updates, so I can share those if you want. But just as a reminder, these are the pictures we looked at last time, where this has been done. Did you talk with Tom Highway?
I think he never got back to me, but given the amount of planning that's had to happen the past few weeks, and it's caused my issues, I'm not expecting there to be a problem there.
That was one of the questions that they heard from you.
Okay, well, site visit? Karen?
Yes, you're good.
Good.
We did the site visit. There's stone walls over the back. I don't have a problem with it. They're fairly lumpy ground. And being that it's a fairly steep hill that goes up to the old church, probably a positive addition. The doors, you sent a picture of the proposed door, which I think will be, it was still deep in the story. Look size, the height. It's not a little shorter door like the houses have doubts, or door. So that's a positive. The cover over the entrance down at the basement. I don't really know what else, maybe Craig has some thoughts on that, but it's a... I forget the call, it was from the trapdoor.
Okay.
And I'll let Craig finish.
Yeah, well, I was there with some members from the CAB. And as far as the retaining wall is concerned, it doesn't seem to be really retaining a great deal. There is a little bit of unevenness in the soil from one side to the other. So it folds a little bit of the embankment back. It sort of levels out the back part of the property and allowed him to excavate down a little bit to make a flat patio. It makes sense. One of our number, I guess you would guess who, had mentioned that it would be preferable had he chosen to do a dry-laid stone wall, which are abundant in the area. You'd also avoid some of the problems that often come up with laid-up stone walls that don't have a footing where frost heaves can unsettle the wall. And over time, they have a... They'll crack and displace. But in general, it's keeping with the surrounding vocabulary of the hamlet of Reinhold, where you do have stone walls. They're of this kind of material. It's not really pretending to be an ancient stone wall. So it's very obviously a modern intervention. And it is around the back of the property, so it doesn't really interfere with the appearance of the hamlet so much. The EV charger is an EV charger. It's small and it's well-placed on the side of the house. And I would rather see it as it is rather than trying to dress it up as something that's supposed to look like an old fire hose or something like that. That would have been better choice. So I think that's a fair installation. I agree with the door. The door that's on there doesn't really seem to contribute to the integrity of the historic building. And the recommended replacement does go along with the transom that's above the door. So that kind of lends itself to a sort of a more rational interpretation. The one thing that I find a little bit questionable is the replacement of the wooden cellar door with a prefabricated Bilco steel door. It's a big red thing that kind of sits there. And it's somewhat obvious. Preferably it would be painted white, like the houses.
Yeah.
Ideally, it would have been replaced in kind with what was taken off. So a wooden door.
I don't think the wooden thing was...
They do make the...
Oh, I know they made them, but I think the wooden thing was like stung together by somebody before me, and it was very poorly done.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be done poorly, but it could be executed and would be a more appropriate for the look of the house.
Sure.
And right across Charles Street, there is another house that has a gray, you know, Bilco door sticking out on the side. It's the kind of thing I don't think we want to encourage. But I think if you were to paint it white when the weather is favorable with a durable paint that's going to hold up.
We'll do that. It's already finished. We have, we had to have it on because the last one filed.
Yeah, okay. And that's all I have to share.
Thank you.
Any other members, questions, comments?
Just one thing I would like to add, that you do realize that this is one part of the town that we care very much about the historic integrity. And your house is very important to the fabric of the hamlet. So when you have plans, please bring them before us so that we can help you to make the right and appropriate choice.
I would love to say, regarding how it before me did a lot of work. Some of it was not consistent with what you're telling me should be done.
Right.
I'd love to see the planning documents on that, if it's possible, all those up.
Do you want to go?
This was 2019, 2020?
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff which was...
When, since you bought it or since he did the work?
Obviously, since he did the work. I bought it from him. So yeah, all part of me.
I think the name, the people who owned it before that guy, I think it was the Briggs family. Trying to come up with...
Yeah, they were trying to help. Yeah, the Briggs were trying to help when doing more mechanics, the place was falling apart. It was probably flipped there.
Yeah, it was a family house, so it had been in the family for a very long time. We were aware of the issues.
Yeah.
Right.
But the person who bought it from them is a developer down in Kepsy. He did a lot of stuff. I was curious to know what, he said he was going to do versus what actually happened.
I would be too, before I was on the planning board, so maybe.
Yeah, excuse me.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here from the public? You shared a comment on this application? If not, Jim? Where do we want to go?
Well, I guess the question we have there was ready to consider approval.
Yeah.
We don't have, we have a site plan environment, we don't have a full site plan. So we'd be accepting the material list.
Is there anyone who is not agree with this at this time? Then I think they will have a draft. Yeah, man, will motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Is that it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. We'll look at the draft approval resolution.
So draft approval resolution from the force consideration tonight. The application of Martin Kemp for site plan and special use permit in time for chapter 125. 125, 69, the microfolly for approval. We've already done the beginning station, retaining wall, patio, landscaping repairs, repairs to basement door, associated basement work. Installation of EV charger, replacement of the front door, rear door in the basement, and by room at 10 Charles Street. Reaffirming the actions type two under SEAKER for a short EAF, not an employer review not required. Respect to the application for special use permit. Finding the proposed work intended uses consistent with the general standards for special use permits. Granting the special use permit conditioned upon receipt of site plan approval. Respect to the application for site plan approval, waiving the full site plan submission requirements as permitted by Section 12577F. Excepting the application is scheduled to submit under approval letter dated January 25. As work on the grounds around the house has already been completed, the doubt changes proposed and the work to the house is repair and replacement of existing elements and not change the footprint. I was thinking of adding, Craig, if you would like, a condition that the Bilco door be painted white.
Yeah, resolution. I think that's fair.
So we will add the requesting the Bilco door be painted white. It's a resolution. And then we're authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the three conditions listed there. Taking this action, the planning board further authorizes the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant along with details on next steps. And remind the applicant that all plans, schedules, or the materials submitted to the Town Runback Building Department or any required permits, CVO, or others must manage materials approved by the planning.
And a motion?
Absolute.
Second?
Second.
Paul Moore, you ready?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And over line. Thank you very much.
Does this mean I can proceed replacing my doors? Or do I need to do something else?
You just have to get your final site plan in so that I can sign it, then we can go to the building.
Okay, so I need to get a site plan together.
We bring in paper copies of your submission materials for them to sign. And then once that process is done, then you can go through it.
Right.
Just check in with Gretchen, make sure she's submitting exactly what we need.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yes.
Watching one of the town board meetings, they, I believe, accepted the HAPAC Historic Preservation Handbook. Do we know anything about that? I haven't seen it, so I don't know what the content is. But is this the kind of thing?
Mr. Kemp can wave, correct if he's...
Oh, yeah, sure. But is this the kind of thing that we want to be sharing with applicants in historic history?
Now that it's approved, so we worked on it, I think this worked on it. HAPAC's bringing a couple copies. They've all got it all digitally on the website. They've drafted them there right now, and we'll be getting the final version up. Now that it's been approved. But yes, we definitely want to push that out. We'll put copies into the libraries up through town hall.
Okay, is the draft on the town board website or is it on HAPAC?
Why don't I suggest that Jim circulate the draft directly to planning board members? I believe it would have been circulated to you, whether you've noted it or responded to it is a different question, but let's get it out to you now. And we should have a discussion as to whether or not we should make that available at any stage, or anybody who comes in and has something about their property that has historic aspects to it that we'll be looking at. And I would hope that we would be doing that when they come in for the pre-application, because that would be the appropriate time for them to get this heads up. Please look at this document. Please take note of it. Please review it before you come in with an application. So yes. And we should just say kudos to Kathy and Jim for pulling that together with HAPAC. It's been a long time coming as a guidance document for people with historic properties in the town, so it's a big step forward. The next public hearing scheduled for this evening is that of Wildflower School, Bern, 7085 and 7091 Route 9. The applicant, Ms. Bern, has asked to have the public hearing continued until the March meeting, which is March 17. And so we will take action. Let me, before I ask for a vote on that, you have seen several communications come in regarding that. Certainly one coming in as a follow-up from the fire department in response to their new application that added more slots. So the fire department has expressed the opinion about what they'd like the look of the driveway to be. So we're continuing to get new information about that. That information has been shared with the applicant, so they have everything we have.
And just as an update, 3:30 this afternoon, I was copied on an email from DOT. So they are working through the process. There's some information that they need to provide, some clarifications they need to make on their submission materials. But it is working its way through the DOT as we're speaking.
So may I have a motion to continue the Wildflower School public hearing until March 17?
So moved. The nature of the...
I will. Is there anyone here? Anyone here from the public? No, thank you. So we'll keep the public hearing open and continue it until the 17. I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. That leads us to the third and the last public hearing of this evening. That is the one for 92 African Road Site Plan, Special Use Permit, and wet weather. Four condo moments.
Actually warmer in here tonight than last night.
It's more terraced in fact, you're exposed.
Is it cold back there?
I know, I can move forward.
It's the back of the bus.
Good evening, my name is Sean Kemp. On behalf of the applicant, I believe that the part three was circulated around a week ago. The board has distributed. On behalf of the applicant, I'd like to thank the board for all of the work that is done on this project. I think that that's about 73 pages. And it's very well thought out, well reasoned, and we really appreciate the time and effort. Not only that the board took in order to put this together, but also members of the public as well. I think that in a way, this whole entire process has been very symbolic of how local government should work. Perhaps we would like it to move a little bit quicker, but you know, things happen and issues need to be addressed. So with that said, again, I'd just like to thank you and the public for engaging in this process. Other than that, I don't have further comments at this point in time.
Jim, do you have comments? Let us record now that Edna has refused herself to let the planning board do it.
No, no comments. As you know, the part three was probably 98%. Part two documents that we went through, in the course of two months last year. The document that I drafted was then given to John and Kim, and they formatted it, added some text, some introductory and conclusion text. But otherwise, I can say the vast majority of it is the same format. Nothing else this time.
Sean, is there anything you'd like to say at this point?
No.
Planning board members, I will open it up for public comment after. If there's anything you'd like to say before I do that, I'll read it. If not, we can go back to the public comment for the receiver. Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this application? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Wayne Thompson, here probably for the last time. It's hard to believe, seven and a half years and three grandchildren later. But so I emailed a letter to Gretchen earlier today. And I would like to just personally thank Gretchen for being so courteous and professional throughout this whole, the whole time, getting a lot of the requests through. So I can speak to just the one who's on there. The one aspect that is kind of a gatekeeping responsibility of the planning board is to determine the merits and circumstances under which you're going to grant a special use permit for this project. In its simplest form, this is a three-lot subdivision. Two of the lots have historic structures on it that are eligible for a special use permit for adaptive reuse. The third lot has an old carriage barn on it. It's 125 acres of undeveloped land that we believe is, in our estimation, not eligible for adaptive reuse considerations for density bonus. The land, the 125 acres, has 65 buildable acres, giving 13 building lots, maybe as much as 17, with some of the current density bonuses under, has a bright zoning without a need for special use permit. I don't want to bore the board with all of the information contained in my letter, but there is. One of the things that I really do want to go forward is that from our client's perspective, some of the neighbors, this density bonus is merely an economic benefit that inures to the applicant. There are no adaptive reuse components on undeveloped land that would warrant doubling the zoning density from R5, essentially making this parcel on R2.5 with the petition of the condominiums. The applicant has so stated that without the condominiums, the project can't go forward. I don't think the purview of the board to contort the zoning code so that this project becomes economically feasible. And the intended purposes of the special use permit under the code is written in the conjunctive. And there are eight qualifications for the issuance of a special use permit. Being written in the conjunctive means that the applicant has to meet all eight of those, maybe a little, maybe nine, but I don't think that the board from the renovation planning would apply to this project. All those eight have to be met in order for the planning board to issue the special use permit. No problem from the other two parcels, if that goes... If adaptive reuse, higher density is warranted. But adaptive reuse applies to buildings and structures, not undeveloped land. So, the question that we raise is, what are the merits and circumstances of this project of undeveloped land warranting a special use permit on that 125-acre parcel? The, the letter goes through some of the previous emissions that we've done. I understand this has been quite a process, and I don't want to take up a lot of the board's time. I wanted just to bring this forward because I read the DEI, so 73 pages. And I think that although the draft addresses adequately the two parcels where there are historic structures on it and the need for further increased density, where the code allows for that increased density, and I think that's an admirable use of a special use permit. On vacant land, probably not so much, in our estimation, that a special permit should be issued. And ultimately, the, the project shouldn't rise or fall on the issue of a special use permit. You have 13 residences could be built on the remaining 65 acres. I haven't seen a financial analysis where, or says that absent those condominiums, the project has to fail because we won't have enough money to do it. I find that a little bit disconcerting when there are modalities in buildings commensurate with Rhinebeck lifestyle, 13 houses that might be able to be built that would yield the same profit as 28 condominiums. So, again, we thank the board for your time, for your attention. It's been a long process for everyone, and I really appreciate the time and attention everyone has given to this matter. And just ask that you consider that part of it, which I don't think is adequately and thoroughly addressed in the draft statement. I do believe that on the other two lots, it is adequately addressed under the code. But for the undeveloped land, I think that the information provided is a little scant from our, of course, and not enough rationale and findings warranting the issuance of it, of a special use permit on that part. Again, I thank the board for your time. Gretchen, thank you so much. Over the years, you've been great, and I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of their evenings. Stay nice and warm.
Thank you. Jim, Sean, would you like to...
Well, I would just say that the, right now, the juncture that the board is at is looking at concluding this seeker environmental review process. Once that is finished, if the board were to adopt the draft negative declaration, then you'll move on to the next part of your review, which will be taking up the applicant's application for subdivision approval, site plan approval, and special use permit. And at that time, we'll add, the board will have to engage with the criteria for each of those things that's set forth in the zoning law and in the subdivision law, and the board can revisit Mr. Thompson's remarks when we enter that stage of the review.
Jim?
I don't think so. Just a reminder that with the next steps comes the ZBA review as well. And that can't be done until the seeker's approval.
That's on the exchange of density. And I believe that the ZBA has, is aware that this is coming, has taken a first step.
Yep. They, they have a public hearing scheduled for the area areas. As I mentioned, the area areas is based on the number of units in the neighborhood, allowing it to be six, it's supposed to four, but it'll still be a total of eight between the two. So, the ZBA will be conducting a public hearing tomorrow night. Typically, if there's no more discussions and the ZBA closes the public hearing, resolution will be likely prepared for the next meeting based on the ZBA's discussion. And I'll be able to inform them what happens tonight. I'd let them know that the planning board is moving forward with the seeker, and they're aware that they can't act until the seeker's done.
Okay. Is there anyone else here from the public wishing to comment on this application? Planning board members, what did you comment, questions?
I just, I feel satisfied that we've met the requirement of the seeker review, and we've taken a hard look at, and analyzed and deliberated on all the criteria. We spent many meetings going over that, and I am confident that we've done our duty. And even a positive declaration would just require the applicant to make mitigation steps, changes to the project that would address those issues. Since none were identified, I just, I feel like we've done our duty.
I would agree with what you said, Greg. And I think, I think as the challenge we had is the way that it's written is just, is done for, not for Rhinebeck. And I think it's, I think it's really challenging. I think it's what we as a board have done very well, is try to, try to keep things Rhinebeck, but the rules and the laws that follow are not necessarily written for our town, which makes these, you know, like development in the world of New York is very different from the development of the world of Rhinebeck.
Right.
So, we've done, we've definitely deliberated plenty, and it's, it's, I think there might, there might be a room for a seeker to be updated, but we have to live and run with what we have in front of us and what's law today.
Right.
Others?
I think we covered it. I think we covered it to five meetings during the seeker review, which was, I think, pretty incredible. The report is, goes through every, everything we did. I mean, we did every question thoroughly. First, I think it's time to close the public hearing and move on.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, the fact that this is just one, this is the state step in the process, and that doesn't preclude us from, you know, taking a closer look from the Rhinebeck perspective, you know, how does it fit our own rules. This is the broader state, and it's important, I think, to not confuse the two things.
Sean, boys, anything you'd like to add? Covered it? With your choice, I'll be listening. I don't know whether to interpret the lack of public comment. I don't know whether to interpret it to...
Someone from the public comments.
Is the public comment period still open?
It is.
May I make a comment?
You're certain.
May I?
Stay in your name.
My name is Edna Watson. I am recused from this, on the planning board, not because I have any relationship with Rockledge, or there is no legal or ethical reason for me to be recused. I am recused because over eight years ago, a member of the town board asked me to recuse myself on the basis of appearances, and so I have. So, that gives me the right of any neighbor to make, to make a comment, and I have a Multifamily housing is not in alien use in a residential neighborhood in Rhinebeck. It is a residential use. It's just one of several kinds of housing permitted in the RC5 district, including two-family houses and accessory dwellings. Each of them has their own acreage requirements filled out in the zoning law, but they do not get bonuses. The, the density that's allowed is clearly stated in the zoning law. The comprehensive plan states, page 10, chapter 6, quote, "Multifamily and single-family housing can coexist side by side." And it displays photographs on page 9 and 11 of that chapter of multifamily structures designed to resemble large single-family houses. The zoning law goes out of its way to ensure that multifamily housing will be compatible with RC5 neighborhoods by allowing no more than six units in each structure, by requiring that they be designed as the comp plan recommends, and by imposing all of the other zoning law requirements to cluster buildings, preserve scenic views, and so forth. I think that another way to look at it is that multifamily housing can be one of the best friends Rhinebeck can have to remain a rural-looking scenic town, because multifamily housing uses less space on the land. I mean, imagine that, that parcel, Rockledge, with 13 properties on it, designed as a conservation subdivision. You would have more driveways, not necessarily from the road, but more driveways going into the wood路. You would have to see more of those houses from the road, from Acrotop Road. 13 single-family houses. It is a different market. Single-family house owner, owners want their own pools, not one pool to be shared. They not only have garages, they often have workshops, and they have pool houses, and they have accessory dwellings. So, instead of seven structures with four units each covering less than 10 acres of land, you would have all of these structures all over that parcel. Much less of the land would be preserved as natural habitat, and what you would see from the road would not be the scenic view that you will not have of the fields and the woods with the structures behind trees very high up and not, you know, likely to be seen. So, I would just like to argue that this is not alien to Rhinebeck. We need much more multifamily housing. In fact, the demand is so high and the supply is so low that apartments at the woods and the gardens are going to all cash buyers even before their listing. The Rockledge condos will provide a needed increase in supply and might prompt other developers to plan developments at more moderate price levels. The comprehensive plan states all over the place, in the chapter on housing, that Rhinebeck has got to have housing that meets the needs of all of its users, of all of its residents, and that includes people who need multifamily housing, you know, can't maintain a house or they don't want to. So, they belong to Rhinebeck too. This is a, I think, a fine project. It meets all of the requirements of the zoning law and the comprehensive plan, excuse me, and it should be approved. The quicker the better.
Bernie Lee Allen, 340, Acrotop Road. I think a lot of valid points have been made tonight. I think Wayne brought up some really good questions about the density. I don't think many of the neighbors are against the project or against the density. And I've said from the beginning, when I got involved about seven years ago, that if we were talking 15 to 20 units, we'd be having a whole different conversation. I don't disagree with Edna about, you know, the open space, but it is a rural road. It is a quiet road, and when you're doubling, we have 17 houses on that part of the road, and if you're putting 36 units in, you're more than doubling the density of that section. And that is one of the main concerns. And we do thank you for your thoughtfulness in this process, but please keep that in mind. Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak, but now I am. My name is Andrea Victor. I live on Primrose Hill Road, 293. So, everybody keeps talking about Acrotop Road. I can see that property directly from my front porch, and when those houses are built, that's what I'm going to see. It's going to be like a mall. So, I just want to point that out, that it's not just Acrotop Road that's affected. It goes around the bend. I live right next to Hagerly on Primrose Hill Road. That whole area is the place that we're going to see the houses. You know, right now, a lot of neighbors are putting up lights, for some reason, in the woods, and has, over the past, like, two years, and has completely affected this neighborhood the way it looks. I don't know why you have to have bright lights in the middle of the country, but that's not my business. It's their business. But now, but now that's going to be my view. So, I do, I do have a little bit of a problem with that. I, I think it should be looked into, like, what would the view be? I don't, you know, I'm not saying no, or, you know, this is terrible. I'm just saying, what would the view be from a place like where I live? How high will the houses be? You know, compared to the tree line, things like that. I know that you guys work really hard to keep Rhinebeck beautiful, and I so appreciate that. That's why I moved here. I'm not from here. The other thing I have to comment on, just because it's my background, and I've done a lot of reading, the reading that's been in, on the web that we can look up, so I'm not saying I'm an expert on this project, but I do know about groundwater. I'm a geologist. I've never understood, and I don't know if this is just common, why the wastewater treatment plant is being piped across the wetland to be dumped, or the outlet being in a stream that's right next to the road, directly off into another property. I don't know why that is. It seems a little odd to me, but I, it's not my expertise, but I think it should be mentioned. The other part that I have wondering about is the wells on the property. There are several test wells that did show up contaminants in them, and I haven't heard anybody talk about that, but I haven't been to all the meetings. So, you're going to take water that contains something, concentrate it into a community, and then concentrate it into a wastewater treatment plant? What is going to happen with those contaminants as it exits that property? I don't know whether that's been spoken about, but it is my understanding that an environmental impact statement is what all this is for, to sort of look at this and say, is this a problem or is this not a problem? So, I just wanted to mention those things that I haven't heard talked about, that have always been on my mind since I learned about this project. So I just wanted to mention those things that I haven't heard talked about, that have always been on my mind since I learned about this project.
Alex, I wish, John, is there anything you'd like to say to wrap this up?
I just wanted to make a comment about Sean's comment. He's right that SIKR is a, a state law and it's, uh, because of that, it's, it's a, in some senses, a one-size-fits-all. And, um, so boards have to make the best use of, the use of it as they can for both small projects and large projects. But as you move into the next phase of your review, you'll be dealing with subdivision site plan and special use permit criteria, which are local to Rhinebeck and were written here and designed specifically for our community. And it'll give you a chance to look at the project through that prism. I just wanted to say the opportunity is coming.
So we, uh, it is up to you, I guess, this evening to decide if you feel ready or if you feel you would like to continue this for any particular reason. We can, we have that option, um, this evening to close the public hearing.
I, I wouldn't close the public hearing, but because you'll have, you, you may want to take comment on the site plan, special permit, and subdivision.
Okay, so it's not, it's not bifurcated?
Correct.
Okay, it's a, it's a continuing public hearing that continues into the next phase of review?
Yes, but you can take, you know, comment on different subject matter.
Okay, so do you have the choice of moving ahead with a vote this evening?
Adopting the, um, negative declaration, the draft neg dec that's in front of you.
I move that we adopt the SIKR resolution.
So we have a motion, the SIKR negative declaration? So for proper terminology, we should?
Yes, we, we actually drafted, uh, I wa, I didn't know whether you guys were going to vote tonight, so I didn't circulate it. But there is a draft resolution adopting the neg dec. Can I distribute that?
Yeah, yes, so why don't we take a look at that? Since practically everyone who's sitting out there has spoken, I think we can conclude that everyone who chose this way is so. We'll provide this to anyone else who needs it at the conclusion of this meeting. John, do you want to walk us through this?
Yes. The first section, I, I'm not going to read the whole thing because of the length of the document, but the first section of the resolution, um, sets forth some factual information about the property, the applicant, and the project, and describes all of those things. Identifies the site, identifies the applicant. Using the applicant's materials, we created a description of what the project intends to accomplish. The next part of the, uh, there's also some, uh, discussion in the resolution about what the applicant is applying, the approvals that the applicant is applying to the Rhinebeck Planning Board for. We mentioned site plan approval, a special use permit, approval of a minor subdivision, and approval of a town of Rhinebeck wetlands permit. The resolution goes on to say that the project is subject to environmental review pursuant to SIKR and that the board commenced the environmental review. We then have a section of the resolution, uh, which discusses the environmental review and again, uh, leads off with factual information about how the review was conducted. Jim, I'll need some help for you just to, when we do the final version, fill in some of the, those dates. So we discuss that the project's been classified, you know, that the board declared itself to be lead agency for the SIKR review, that the project was classified as a type-one action pursuant to SIKR and that a coordinated, uh, environment, environmental review's been conducted. There's a listing of the involved agencies pursuant to SIKR. There's a listing of the interested agencies pursuant to SIKR. Then, um, there's a, a discussion of the environmental review process and what the board has considered as it's gone through its environmental review pursuant to SIKR. It discusses the comment that you've received. It discusses the fact that you completed, or you reviewed part one of the full environmental assessment form. It discusses that you completed part two of the full environmental assessment form and that, uh, after due deliberations and study, the planning board has determined that the project would not have any significant adverse environmental impacts and that an environmental impact statement will not be required. We, it states that part three of the EAF, which was circulated to you earlier in the week, has been completed. And I will read the action items. It says, "Now therefore be resolved based on the foregoing and upon all of the reasons set forth in part three of the full environmental assessment form, including attachments and appendices, as follows. Section one. After due deliberations and study and after taking the required, quote-unquote, hard look at the potential adverse environmental impacts that may be caused by the proposed action, as lead agency, the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board determines that the proposed Rockledge condominium project will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts, provided that the specific conditions of approval are met and that an environmental impact statement will not be required for the proposed action because this action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. The reasons in support of the board's determination are set forth in detail in the full environmental assessment form, part three, and the negative declaration, determination of non-significance, which is attached to the FEAF, FEAF part three. Both the FEAF part three and the negative declaration, determination of non-significance documents are incorporated into this resolution by reference. Section three. The board hereby adopts part three of the FEAF form and the negative, and the negative declaration, determination of non significance document attached to it and declares that a negative declaration is its determination of non-significance for the proposed action. Section four. The board authorizes Melody Moore as the chair of this board to sign the FEAF part three on behalf of this planning board as lead agency. Section five. The board directs its planning consultant, James Levy, AICP of the firm of Planning for Places, to publish a notice of the negative declaration in the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, environmental notice bulletin, which notice... Oh, I'll have to take that last phrase out, Jim. Uh, section six. The board directs its clerk Gretchen Smith to provide copies of the FEAF part three and the negative declaration, determination of non-significance to the following. Hudson Valley Rhinebeck LLC, the Town of Rhinebeck Town Board, the Town of Rhinebeck Building Department, the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board, the Town of Rhinebeck Historical and Archaeological Preservation Advisory Committee, the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development, the Dutch County Department of Environmental Health, the New York State Historic Preservation Office, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and the New York State Department of Transportation.
At this point, I would like a motion to approve this resolution. So move by Sharon.
Second.
Seconded by Delise, and I will to roll call. Craig Moschowski.
Hi.
Tom Lumbergh.
Hi.
Sean Jones.
Really official person, I see.
Terrell.
Hi.
Delise Terrell.
Hi.
Not everybody except my son. Sharon, yes, folks, you hear the motion, so I guess.
Yes.
And please note that Edna is here but will be removed from the list because lucky records show that in this document, Edna will be shown as having keys herself. Okay. I think so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much to everyone who has participated in this process reviewed on the public or will be moved to the planning board, or consultants who have done a tremendous amount of work to enable us through this phase of the review. And that will conclude the public hearing schedule for this evening. And, um, there is no additional business. I would just update you on a couple of things. The work that we prepared, Jim, Karen, and I, we have a garden workforce housing this week, um, last, last week, um, okay, was it?
When did they?
I would say last week. The town board convened a special meeting with the applicant and the applicant's representatives. And the, um, the primary purpose of the meeting was to, uh, enter into discussion in regard, in particular, to recommendations and the paperwork that we sent to them. Craig was there and I was there, Jim was there as well. And Jim was able to answer some sort of technical questions. They're continuing their review. I, I certainly came away, um, pleased. I can say that when the plans were activated before the town board took the document that we had prepared and went through the documents section by section and raised each, um, specific area that we had prepared and opened it up for discussion with the town board and the applicant, listening. Comments, they apparently have replied, the applicant in writing, we have not seen their reply to what we submitted yet, but they did walk through it. There was some indication that some of the things, it was very hard to hear. It was filmed from where the gathering, the, the applicant had taken note of some of the things that he embraced and at least they were able to discuss further. I will say in that meeting, what it proved to me, that walkability was one of the key conversations that took place among members of the town board and the applicant. And so I walked away. I had to read all of Craig's say, to make out something, but I did feel that our efforts were not in vain, that our efforts, I, I'm not guaranteeing that everything we recommended will be adopted. There are certainly, um, I think, a waiters to be expected from the town board that this takes forward. But I just want to compliment you on the fact that you were asked to do something, you took the responsibility for doing that seriously. You've gotten your comments here. Jim took them and put them into a document, and the town board took that document and made it the focus of their discussion, had a special meeting. So just wanted to let you know that, you know, um, I, I think it was important that we were here. And I do believe it's on the record, certainly was part of the family. So compliments to you for staying with that. And I'm sorry, I was... Craig, is there anything to add?
Well, I just, I had a, got a different take on it. I was somewhat surprised that many of the issues that were raised in 2022 are only now being looked at by the planning board, like the issue of walkability.
The town board.
I'm sorry, the town board. Like the issue of walkability. There was a kind of dismissive tone on behalf of the applicant that, oh, well, we'll just put it, we put a little stub driveway in there and there will be a path there someday. There seemed to be some serious issues about obtaining easements from Wells Manor and, uh, the Village Green in order to make a, a pathway through there. Which, if this project comes to pass and they don't have those easements and those walkways in place, people are going to trespass. There's no preventing that. I, I got the sense that there's something going on with Wells Manor where they're maybe thinking about putting in a development of their own on that property. So that coordination, I think, is very important to the success and the viability of this project long-term. And the fact that it is only now coming to light because, you know, we sent them a letter, is, is really a little bit troubling because these are issues that we brought up in 2022. And I have other things to say. I, I get the feeling that there, there wasn't a, a very deep familiarity with the, with the actual physical site with the members of the town board. And, uh, I hope that they develop that going forward.
Well, there doesn't negate a comment, I think, which is, I'm glad we got it forward because once again, you know, presented something to them that we believe maybe can be considered. So, um, that concludes the business of this evening, and I can have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hi.
Close extension. Thank you very much.